I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting for the City of Springdale for January 2nd. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Brown, if you take role.
Mr. Gleves?
Present.
Mr. Jacobs?
Present.
Ms. McFarland?
Present.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Present.
Mr. Vanover?
Present.
Mrs. Webster?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Counsel, you have the minutes from the December 18, 2024 meeting in your packets. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion or changes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
All right, the minutes are approved with five affirmative votes and two abstentions. All right, next we'll move on to communication. Ms. Brown, are there any communications for council this evening?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Keeping things moving, next up we have communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason. You'd simply come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to speak to council on any matter. I will note that there is also a public hearing tonight related to an ordinance that comes next. You're certainly welcome to speak now if it's about anything, or the chickens, urban farming issue, or you can wait for that public hearing if it's just for that item. All right, communications from the audience is now open. Second call?
Still not used to writing that 2025 down. All right, my name is Denise Bolinger. I am at 113 Rosetta Court. I am just here to talk about the chickens and also to invite you guys to our SYB...
Coaches Memorial.
Yeah, Winter's Sports Rally. I just couldn't figure that out. Winter Sports Rally tomorrow at 6:30. If you guys wanted to get there early, you could. But you're all invited to be there and join us. And then also, I just wanted to speak on the chickens I spoke last time. I just think if it doesn't go through tonight, that maybe we should think about putting it on a ballot. I know I saw that on social media already. I think that's a really good idea because when you guys did the voting through the Springdale thing, not many people knew about it, so like only about 100 people actually did the survey. Maybe more than 100. And there's like 12,000 people in Springdale, so that's not really a good idea on who actually wants and who doesn't. So I think if we put it on a ballot, that we would get a better idea on if Springdale's more for it or against it. I also think we should have the whole thing on the ballot, not just chickens, because the whole thing has rabbits and bees and fowl. So I think the whole thing should be involved in that. But that's just my personal opinion. I think we would be able to get a better look on who actually would run it and not want it if we had it out there on the ballot. So that's all I'd say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the floor is still open. If anyone else would like to address council? Second call? Third and final call? And I'm closing communications in the audience. Next we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first ordinance we have is ordinance number 552024. There is a public hearing attached to this, and this is a third reading. So how we're going to handle this tonight is we'll go ahead and read the ordinance for the third time. Then we'll have the public hearing, so people have an opportunity. If anyone in the audience wants to address council related just to this ordinance, they'll have that opportunity, and then council can decide how they want to depose of it. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and do the reading of ordinance 552024. Mr. Jacobs?
Ordinance 552024, and ordinance amending section 1, 153.252 F6C of the Springdale Code of Ordinances regulating the husbandry of fowl, rabbits, and bees. Whereas the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio council previously adopted regulations that prohibited the husbandry of fowl on any property in the City of Springdale. The city that was less than three acres in size. And whereas council seeks to revise the regulations regarding the husbandry of fowl on property located in the city. And whereas council held a public hearing regarding these amendments on January 2nd, 2025, and the Urban Farming Committee is recommending their approval. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. Section 153.252 F6C of the Springdale Code of Ordinance shall be amended in its entirety as follows. F6C. Husbandry of fowl, rabbits, or bees shall be regulated as follows. One. Rabbits or bees may be raised or kept for a residence owner's use on any single-family residential property in the city that is greater than three acres in size. Any structure for housing rabbits or bees may only be located in the rear yard and shall be at least 100 feet from any property line. Two. No more than six hens, female chickens, may be raised or kept on any single-family residential property in the city. The property on which the hens are raised or kept must be one-half acre or greater in size. No roosters may be raised or kept on any property in the city. Hens may not be raised or kept on any residential property for any commercial use. Hens must be confined to the rear yard area by fencing within a run or chicken coop at all times. A chicken coop must be screened from view from adjacent properties with a combination of fencing and/or landscaping and shall not be more than 30 square feet in area and seven feet tall. The chicken coop may only be located in the rear yard and shall be at least 15 feet from any property line. Enclosures and chicken coops must be kept in a clean, dry, odor-free, and sanitary condition. A chicken coop shall not be considered when determining the total number of accessory structures on any property. A non-transferable permit must be obtained from the city by the property owner. A certification of completion will be issued by the city following an inspection. The total number of certificates to be issued under this section shall not exceed 25 at any given time. Each certificate, each certification shall be for a two-year period of time and may be renewed following a request by the property owner and an inspection by the city. Three. The city may revoke a certification issued under section 153.252 F6C2 following two violations of any provision of that section. Section 2. City administration is directed to create a permit and certification for raising or keeping fowl in the city consistent with provisions of this ordinance. Section 3. This council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in informal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 4. That this ordinance shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Counsel, as I stated at the top, there is a public hearing required for this ordinance as it updates our zoning code. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So if anyone in the audience would like to address council related to ordinance number 552024, this is your opportunity. Just like with the communications to council, you simply come to the podium, sign in, state your name and address, and then you can address council again for up to five minutes related to ordinance number 552024. At this point, the public hearing is open. Second call? Third and final call? All right, at this point, I'm closing the public hearing related to ordinance number 552024. Counsel, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 552024. It has had this public hearing and has three readings. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to kind of review the long process, and it has been a long process. I appreciate all the help from administration and Michelle working on that committee. It was a long haul, and we had some things that led to some unexpected bumps. We spent a lot of time trying to find out if we should move this ordinance out of the zoning code, for example. That took several weeks. And then we wanted to respond to planning commission's concerns, and that added a few more weeks onto the process. So I know it has been a long road. But in summary, at the end of the day, what we've done is we relaxed one restriction and then added a whole bunch of restrictions that didn't exist before. We took the acreage from three acres down to a half acre. All the other additional restrictions are the most strict you would find in any community in the area. There are restrictions that aren't included in some of the models that we looked at. The goal all along was to try to allow residents to have some more freedom to do what they will with their property, but also balancing that out with neighbors' concerns that would naturally come up. And I feel like we've done that. When we lowered this down to 25 permits, we're talking about less than 1% of residences in the city. The number of residents who are even able to apply for a permit is 134 residences. And we're talking 25 of those. So I would ask my colleagues if you're at all interested in allowing residents to have some more freedom to use their property as they see fit while balancing out neighbors' concerns. I think 25 permits is a good try. It's a good attempt to see how well this goes. And I would be among the first that would move to amend or go back to more clear restrictions if it doesn't go well. That being said, I feel like I worked really well with administration. They feel comfortable enforcing this. And so I'll be voting yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Ms. Webster?
I don't know your name, the lady that comes up here all the time about this ordinance. You. Me, yeah. Shelley, I think. I really am sorry you've had to go through this all year. Well, I personally don't think it was handled right from the beginning. That's pre-committee. The committee was all right. I mean, before that. I can't really vote for this because I know they're your pets, and I have a pet, and I know how you feel. But it is the law, and I am kind of a law and order type person. So I will have to vote against it. But thank you for your patience, and thank you for your perseverance for what you really believe in. Thank you.
Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Ms. President. Just one comment. Well, I will state upfront, I am not in support of this. And part of it is we've pulled probably the most ecologically beneficial creature out of it. The bees, to me, would be more environmentally beneficial and friendly than what chickens are. And I guess the other caveat, I guess to go Mr. Braun, since this came back to council with a negative recommendation from planning commission, it will take a supermajority, correct?
Yes, that's already been confirmed. That I was going to mention that once we finish our deliberations, that it will take a supermajority of council in order to pass because the version that went to planning did not receive their recommendation. The other thing I'll add, Mr. Vanover, to your benefit is when we created the committee for urban farming, its task was to look at all three areas. And it was much like the Rinal Program Committee was decided to do it in phases, right? So they started with chickens because there was more public interest for that. There's nothing that prevents them from going back and removing for the remaining items. So if your only concern was that, that they were ignoring the bees in that area, that's not an issue. They have the charter to go ahead and go back and do those after this if they so choose. All right, still in questions and discussion, Mr. Gleves?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank the committee for the job that they've done. I was able to attend one meeting. I was impressed at how you committed to getting to an answer. I thought the QR code was great. Administration, thank you for doing what you all have done. That's basically all I wanted to say. I thought you did a great job, and thank you so much for your work.
All right, still in questions and discussion? All right, and I'll add my comments to that. As Mr. Gleves said, it was quite a bit of work to get it to this level of detail. They were asked to look at zoning code, which is always a long road and difficult to do. I personally believe that the section of code that we're talking about did need to be updated, which is why I agreed when council members asked me if they could look at this, that I agreed that it made a lot of sense to do that. Even switching, right now chickens are permitted in Springdale, and there's no licensing, there's no health checks, there's no reviews of those pens. It is limited based on the acreage, but it seems like we're not doing our job if we're just ignoring the rest of it. So I feel like that this is a fair start and a good way to look at what is something that our neighboring communities do, which is permit these. Our neighboring communities actually have fewer restrictions than what's been proposed here by the committee. But as Mr. Vanover mentioned, it will require a supermajority to pass. I personally support property rights and the ability for people to take care of animals that they think are important to them. This would be one of them, fowl, rabbits, and bees. The world has changed. I know I was just at Kroger the other day, or Jungle Gems, and they had a sale on eggs from $5.49 to $2.99 for eggs. And I was thinking, man, I wish I had chickens a year ago. But that being said, it is a change and it is significant, which is why we approached it with deliberation and consideration. So I appreciate the work that the committee has done to get us to this point. If there's no other comments or questions, we can go ahead and take a vote on this. Ms. Brown, if you please poll council on ordinance number 552024.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
No.
Ms. Sullivan Weiscup?
No.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. While it has four votes, it does require a supermajority. So ordinance number 552024 fails with four affirmative votes and three negative votes. For people who are familiar or asking about the process from here, council is not permitted to take up a similar ordinance for at least 90 days, at which time it could certainly take up an ordinance related to section 153.252 F6C again. If there was desire from the committee to immediately jump back in and look at bees or rabbits, we'd want to check with Mr. Braun to make sure that we... I know you can do the committee work if you wanted to ahead of that. And you could also go back and look at fowl as well if you thought it was important based on the feedback you got through this process. I know you learned a lot working with planning, and there might be a different way to do this where it won't require a supermajority. But you're certainly still empowered to do that as a committee. The other point I'll make that was brought up during communications from the audience, there is, there has been a lot of discussion that I've currently certainly seen in the community for a citizens initiative. That's not something that council does. That's something that residents would have to do if they wanted to do it. And there's a process that's outlined in our charter, and the Board of Elections can also help you with that if anyone in the, out there in Springdale wants to take that up themselves. It's called a citizen referendum or a citizen ordinance, and the Board of Elections could help you with that as well. All right. That's it for ordinance 552024. Mr. Braun, did you have another comment on that? I saw you like come on, but I was in the middle of my speech.
No, I was just going to point out that if there is a desire to take it up so that we don't need that two-thirds vote, we may want to involve the planning committee. You know, all the steps be involved so that we don't run into that situation if we think there were. Because as you'll recall, they came back with a long list of things that they wanted to address that the committee then had to go and address, and maybe we could shorten that process. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Yeah, thank you. And I think we took that note when we set up the, we sent to rules and law the question about dogs and domestic animals that could be stayed. That was some feedback that was given then as well. All right, we're moving on now. Ordinance number 12025 is next on the agenda. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 12025, an ordinance adopting the annual appropriation estimated receipts ordinance for fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. Whereas the City Council needs to adopt appropriations for current expenses, estimated receipts, and other expenditures of the City of Springdale, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. That in order to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Springdale, the legal level of budgetary control for annual appropriation purposes is as follows. The general fund at the departmental level, personal service expenditures and all other expenditures, and all other funds at the fund level, personal service expenditures and all other expenditures. The general fund departmental levy is hereby defined as documented in Exhibit A, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. The legal level of budgetary control for annual estimated receipt purposes is at the fund level for all funds. Section 2. Be it resolved by council to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Springdale for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. The following sums be and are hereby set aside and appropriated as shown on Exhibit B, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Section 3. Be resolved by council to adopt the estimated receipts of the City of Springdale for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, as shown on Exhibit C, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. Section 4. Including the appropriations and estimated receipts for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025 are the following operating transfers and advances. Transfer in, General Fund 010. Transfer out, Unclaimed Monies Fund 096 in the amount of $2,000. Transfer in, Insurance Trust Fund 085. Transfer out, General Fund 010 in the amount of $375,000. Transfer in, Health Insurance Trust Fund 086. Transfer out, General Fund 010 in the amount of $25,000. Transfer in, Street Improvement Debt Fund 088. Transfer out, General Fund 010 in the amount of $560,000. Transfer in, Capital Improvements Fund 090. Transfer out, General Fund 010 in the amount of $1.8 million. Transfer in, Residential Recycling Fund 091. Transfer out, General Fund 010 in the amount of $137,000. Advance in, General Fund 010. Advance out, Health Insurance Trust Fund 086 in the amount of $75,000. Advance in, General Fund 010. Advance out, Capital Improvements Fund 090 in the amount of $1,702,424. Advance in, Health Insurance Trust Fund 086. Advance out, General Fund 010 in the amount of $75,000. Section 5. The Finance Officer Tax Commissioner is hereby authorized to draw warrants for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers herefor approved by City Council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrant shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except the persons employed by authority of and in accordance with law or ordinance. Provided further, the appropriation for contingencies can only be expended upon approval of a two-thirds vote of council for items of expense constituting a legal obligation against the city and for the purposes other than those covered by the other specific appropriations herein may. Section 6. That it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 Ohio Revise Code and the rules of this council adopted in accordance therewith. Section 7. That this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
And this is a financial ordinance, so it does not require a second reading. Is that right, Mr. Braun? All right, counsel, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 12025. It can be act on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council on ordinance number 12025.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 12025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to ordinance number 22025. This is just a first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 22025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a business incentive grant agreement with G5 Entertainment LLC. Whereas the City of Springdale, the city, has the ability to offer various economic incentives to businesses within the city, and whereas the city seeks to enter into a business incentive grant agreement with G5 Entertainment LLC as an economic incentive for locating within the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. That the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into a business incentive grant agreement in the amount of $70,000 with G5 Entertainment LLC, the agreement. A copy of the agreement is attached as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section 2. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in informal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 3. This ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the first reading of ordinance number 22025. Is there any questions or discussion tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll see this again at our next meeting. All right, next we'll move on to ordinance number 32025, another first reading. Mr. Jacobs?
Ordinance number 32025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Mitchell Salon and Day Spa Incorporated related to a job creation and retention program agreement. Whereas Mitchell Salon and Day Spa Incorporated has requested assistance from the City of Springdale, the city, in the form of an incentive to encourage job creation and retention. And whereas the city is willing to provide the requested local incentive pursuant to the terms of a job creation and retention incentive program agreement between Mitchell Salon and Day Spa Incorporated and the city, the agreement. And whereas the city believes entering into the agreement will bring economic benefits to the city. That now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. That the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Mitchell Salon and Day Spa Incorporated related to local job creation and retention substantially in the form attached as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section 2. That the Finance Officer Tax Commissioner is hereby authorized to make payments to Mitchell Salon and Day Spa Incorporated pursuant to the terms of the agreement. Section 3. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this was the first reading of ordinance number 32025. Any questions or discussion this evening? All right, seeing none, we will see this again at our next meeting. All right, next up is ordinance number 4?
Yeah.
2025. It is a first reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 42025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Salus O'Brien Incorporated related to a job creation and retention program agreement. Whereas Salus O'Brien has requested assistance from the City of Springdale, the city, in the form of an incentive to encourage job creation and retention. And whereas the city is willing to provide the requested local incentive pursuant to the terms of a job creation and retention incentive program agreement between Salus O'Brien Incorporated and the city, the agreement. And whereas the city believes entering into the agreement will bring economic benefits to the city. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. That the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Salus O'Brien Incorporated related to local job creation and retention substantially in the form attached as Exhibit A incorporated herein by reference. Section 2. The Finance Officer Tax Commissioner is hereby authorized to make payments to Salus O'Brien Incorporated pursuant to the terms of the agreement. Section 3. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revise Code. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the first reading of ordinance number 42025. Are there any questions or discussion this evening? All right, seeing none, we will see this again at our next meeting. All right, next up we have resolution 12025. Mr. Jacobs?
Resolution R12025, a resolution requesting advance payment from the Hamilton County Auditor. Whereas section 321.34 of the Ohio Revise Code allows a municipal corporation to request payment from the county auditor to the municipal corporation of any of its funds derived or other sources payable by law to the county treasury. And whereas the City of Springdale wishes to request advance payment of such funds from the Hamilton County Auditor. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. That the auditor and treasurer of Hamilton County, Ohio, be requested to respectfully draw and to pay to the Finance Officer Tax Commissioner and/or city administrator of the City of Springdale all applicable funds, including real estate taxes currently available for distribution to the City of Springdale. This resolution covers the period of time, January 1, 2025 to December 31, 2025. The following positions are designed as authorized to make a request for advance payment, designated as authorized to make a request for advance payment. Finance Officer Tax Commissioner, City Administrator. Section 2. That the Finance Officer Tax Commissioner of the City of Springdale is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Hamilton County Auditor. Section 3. That it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 Ohio Revise Code and the rules of this council adopted in accordance therewith. Section 4. That this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Counsel, you've heard the reading of resolution 12025. It can be act on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Question or discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council?
Ms. Sullivan Weiscup?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution 12025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to resolution 22025. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution R22025, a resolution authorizing the amendsment of municipal funds. Whereas the City of Springdale's charter and chapter 39 of the codified ordinances of the City of Springdale establish the authority and procedures for the designation of depositories for the interim deposit of municipal funds. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1. That the Finance Officer Tax Commissioner of the City of Springdale is hereby authorized to invest any such funds of the city as are not needed for any municipal purpose for more than 90 days in any lawful security or depository as determined by the charter of the city and the Ohio Revise Code. The determination of the cash requirement shall be made by the Finance Officer Tax Commissioner. Section 2. That all proceeds relative received from the investment of funds Section 2, that all proceeds relative received from the investment of funds shall be credited to the general fund unless required to be credited to the fund from which the funds originally came. Section 3, that this authorization shall extend through calendar year 2025. Section 4, that it is founded and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 Ohio Revised Code and the rules of this council adopted in accordance therewith. Section 5, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
All right, council, you've heard the reading of Resolution 22025. It can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 22025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we're coming up against some appointments. I know the packet went out without a name for the mayor or appointment. Is there a name that you wanted to insert, or is this something we should park for another later date, Mr. -- I'm sorry, Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to appoint Kimberly Kraft to the Board of Health, and just briefly, she's been a 40-year resident. She's retired RN. She has been a charge nurse. She's been a neurological surgical nurse doing pre-op, peri-op, and post-op with regard to those things, and she also was a value analysis coordinator where she was going through negotiating and selecting vendors for the supply chain management. So I think she'd be a great asset to the Board of Health. Looking for council support.
All right. And as this is a mayor appointment, this isn't a nomination. It's simply confirming an appointment from the mayor. All right, so at this point, Mr. Jacobs, if you'd please read Resolution 32025 with the name Kimberly Kraft inserted into the blank.
Resolution R32025, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Kimberly Kraft as a member of the City of Springdale Board of Health for the term ending November 30, 2026. Whereas a vacancy occurred in the City of Springdale Board of Health as a result of the expiration of a current member's term, which expired December 31, 2024, and whereas the mayor has announced the appointment of Kimberly Kraft as a member of the City of Springdale Board of Health for the term ending December 31, 2026. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, with members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that Kimberly Kraft be and is hereby confirmed as a member of the City of Springdale Board of Health for the term ending December 31, 2024 -- 2026. Section 2, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of Resolution 32025. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second.
I heard -- I had Ms. Sullivan Weiskopf for the first and Mr. Vanover for the second. All right, questions or discussion? Mayor Hawkins?
Sorry, just one more thing. I'd be remiss if I didn't say how much we appreciate Dr. Ketchum's years of service. I believe he represented four decades' worth of time with regard to service to the city in that capacity, and so he will be sorely missed, but he's going to use his time in doing other things, and he's more than put in his share for the Board of Health. So we also appreciate all his time. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, Ms. Brown, if you poll council.
Ms. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution 32025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to council appointments. We'll use the same process as we did at our last meeting, where before the reading, we'll have the nominations, so we'll do them one at a time. There'll be an opportunity to nominate, and then we will deal with inserting into the blank, and then we'll read the actual position and vote. So since the next item we have up is for Resolution 4, which is an appointment to the Springdale Charter Revision Committee, I'm now opening the floor for nominations for this position. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring forward Mrs. Pamela Ramirez's name. She's a lifelong resident, has been involved at multi-levels with the city, her family, and actually extended family too. She drove a bus with Princeton for 22 years. She has been in Springdale for 66 years, and she's coached girls softball, and also was active in adult sports.
The floor is still open for nominations for the Springdale Charter Revision Committee. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to nominate Mike Bender. He's a local resident. He's been in Springdale for 17 years. He started his own business, Executive Security and Technologies. He's got an electrical engineering degree from Miami University. He's very active in the community, especially with our nearby scout troop. He's been involved with them for years. He also coached basketball at the Rec. He's invested in the community. He's got two kids going to the Princeton City Schools, and I've spoken with Mr. Bender over the years, and he's expressed some interest in contributing more to the city.
All right, the floor is still open for nominations. Ms. Webster.
I don't have a nomination. I wasn't clear. I want to know what he said. He called -- I didn't understand his nomination, the name.
Here. It's -- the nomination was for Mike Bender. All right. Floor is still open for nominations. Third and final call for nominations. All right, at this point, I'm closing nominations for the open positions for the Springdale Charter Revision Committee. Council, as I've said before, and this is for Mr. Ramirez, who's in the audience, and Mr. Bender, who might be watching, anytime we have multiple nominees for position, just know that it's just -- we appreciate that. Whichever one gets not -- whichever one ends up with the position, it just means that Springdale has a lot of people that are invested and want to help, and regardless of how the vote goes, we appreciate both people being willing to serve. So in order to fill the position, what we do is we've got two nominations, one for Pam Ramirez and a second for Mike Bender. So what we'll do is we'll go down council one at a time. So Ms. Brown, we'll poll you one at a time, and you simply need to respond with either Ramirez or Bender. And then whoever has the most votes is the name that will be inserted into the charter revision resolution. Any questions about the process that we're using? All right, so Ms. Brown, if you poll council on the nominations for Ramirez or Bender.
Mr. Jacobs?
Mike Bender.
Mr. Vanover?
Pam Ramirez.
Mrs. Webster?
Ramirez.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Ramirez.
Mr. Gleves?
Bender.
Ms. McFarland?
Mrs. Ramirez.
Mr. Anderson?
Mike Bender. Makes it closer. No offense, Mrs. Ramirez. We do appreciate everyone that was put forward for that. With four votes for Pam Ramirez, she will be inserted into the resolution. So, Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready, if you'd read Resolution 42025 with Ms. Ramirez's name inserted.
Resolution R42025, a resolution appointing Mike Bender to serve as a member of the City of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2029. Whereas a vacancy occurred in the City of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for --
You read the wrong name. I'm sorry. Can you -- sorry, just to interrupt you if you could.
I apologize.
Yeah, I think you read Mr. Mike Bender.
Oh, I -- my mistake. I'd written it first. Resolution R42025, a resolution appointing Pam Ramirez to serve as a member of the City of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2029. Whereas a vacancy occurred in the City of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2024, and whereas the council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, has determined that Pam Ramirez shall be appointed to fill the vacancy and serve as a member of the City of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2029. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, with members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that Pam Ramirez be and is hereby appointed to serve as a member of the City of Springdale Charter Revision Committee for the term ending December 31, 2029. Section 2, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of Resolution 42025. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second. Moved in second. Questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Brown, if you poll council on Resolution 42025.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution 42025 passes with seven affirmative votes. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, for being willing to serve on the Charter Revision Committee. Your experience is appreciated. All right. Next we'll move on to Resolution 52025. Again, we'll start with nominations. At this point, I'll open the floor for nominations for members to serve on the Springdale Tax Review Board for the term ending December 31, 2026. The floor is now open for nominations. All right, not seeing any. What that would mean is that we can go ahead and table this for our next meeting. We can do some homework and see if we can come back with another name. I'm not sure if anyone reached out to Ms. Chapman, who was serving in position before. I could certainly do that before our next meeting and see if she's willing to serve again, but we'll go ahead. I guess I'll make a motion -- I'm looking for a motion to table this till our next meeting. Ms. Sullivan Weiskopf?
I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 052025 till the next meeting, please.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? I'm sorry, to table, we don't have discussion. So, Ms. Brown, if you poll council to table Resolution 52025.
Mrs. Sullivan Weiskopf?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Gleves?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?